United States of America, the Republic for which the stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Call the meeting's order, we have a forum, I'll take approval of the agenda in a minute.
So moved.
Second.
More than second, on favor, I.
I.
I, both. Uh, Rich Brown, good morning.
Morning, how are you guys?
Good.
Um, asphalt paving started in grafton this morning, so I guess, you know, a couple of days of paving, assuming the rain doesn't bother them too much tomorrow, Wednesday, but uh, they get going on that. Um. Got a question on um, project funding and the windmills and things like that. Um, we never really discussed thoroughly or fully, is there any consideration to using any TIF dollars for roadway paving in the future when this wind tower project gets done?
Yes.
The, the reason I ask is because I know, and I've been trying to keep you guys updated on foreign market funding, and I know that we were kind of borrowed ahead because of the 105 project here last year. And the funding, and what I'm concerned about is the funding because of the COVID and the tax dollars being reduced. I don't know that we're going to have the funds in the foreign market fund like we want to have to do 105 from Northwood to the county line. And I don't know what the feds are going to do and, and, and uh, whether they're going to have some sort of plan or not. And trying to just figure out where we're at with the uh, the funding we will have because we're borrowed, we're borrowed ahead about 2.8 years, but think about from a year from now, we'll be borrowed 1.8 years ahead. Um, just not sure what the, what they're going to allow me to do and what they're not going to allow me to do. And so I just wanted to kind of bring it up as a topic of discussion. And we don't have to make any decisions today, but just wondering if there's any consideration for, for tiffing for any projects? Because the foreign market fund's going to be kind of in the red for, for a couple of years, or, or not a couple of years, but at least a year, and with projects kind of getting stacked up, is there any outlook wanting to do more, more tiffing? Or should we just kind of, and we still got the 105 trust fund we can borrow from to do something out there too? Just kind of want to get a feel for what you guys are thinking, or might want to think about.
Yeah, I know we've kind of just hit this on some conversations with this, and I think, yeah, we need to do something because we've got a bunch of bridges that are still in need of repair. Um, and I know we've discussed even that ordinance on using this money. Um, there's certain percentages that can go to certain things, and that may have to change or be adjusted or even abolish that ordinance. I don't know, we gotta discuss that. It's more in here a little more yet, but.
Well, maybe we can have a more detailed discussion here one of these days. I want to get, you know, I can get the project design and whatnot, but whether the funding's available is going to be the tricky thing. I mean, we got, we got some local money we can throw at it too. Right now, it's programmed as a, as a 100% FM project, but we can always adjust those numbers a little bit too and do some local funding as well if we've got some, we'll know, we'll know um, when we get uh, the fiscal year 20 closed out and know what we've got for carryover balance and try to balance out what we've got, that projects that are still getting paid for yet. Because we still got all of our local projects that are just starting to get paid right now. So, once we know what comes out there, we're going to need to adjust, we're going to need to adjust the budget here this year again because of where projects fall in and where money gets spent. So, we'll try to do a better, or look at a, at a tighter accounting procedure here. Once these projects are done, we know where the money's at, so. But just kind of wanted to put that little seed in, in the back of your heads about maybe looking at doing something like that.
Well, we still have a year or two for this stuff to shake out, but projects need to be identified so planning can start.
Rush.
Yeah, we've got, we've got plenty of roads that we can do.
Right.
Um, has road use tax changed a whole lot yet, or we can see that in the next?
We're, we're seeing a little bit of decline in that already. Um, because the funds are being deposited, they're about two months behind for where we get them. So, we're going to see, we're, we're, we're in the, we're in the area where we're going to see the decrease in funding, but hopefully we start seeing the increases come back up. This all depends on travel and everything else, so. Um, but we are, I think, I, I don't know if I showed you guys here a week or two ago, or if it was Mitchell County. I know we talked about funding and, and how much the decrease was in, in normal years, so um. Yeah, we are seeing the decrease in some of that funding.
Okay. You're talking from Northwood to Xenia, right?
Pardon me?
You're talking 105 East, right?
No, West.
Well, from Wheeler way all the way up to the county.
Right, that asphalt's falling apart faster than we can keep it, keep it going. And so, I've got a couple of different options on the table as far as, well, doing the asphalt option or the, or the concrete option. We can mill off all the asphalt and put a one inch interlayer down and then do a two or three inch asphalt surface. Or we can do a, I'm just trying to figure out yet whether we do a, an overlay just like we did from Northwood to, to uh, the interstate. Um, costs are considerably different, obviously, and then if you try to look at life cycle costs, things like that, well, there's a balance somewhere in there, but um, just got some numbers to throw out. There's about a, based on just the hard, the hard numbers and the, the actual bigger bid items. You know, if we go with a, with an overlay option like we did with uh, with 105 coming from Northwood, we're looking at, and it's programmed at about, the project's programmed at about 2.8 million for the whole project. And the concrete option is about 3.2 million and the asphalt option's about 2.2. And that doesn't include any contingencies or all the smaller items, but there's a spread in there in cost, but also then there's a longevity, a life cycle longevity with concrete versus asphalt too, that, that one needs to kind of look at too, so. Um, but just as a heads up, I mean, that's where we're at um, with some rough estimates. But yeah, and then uh, we're going to be working on 105 East, doing some patching here in the next, hopefully this week. We've got some pretty big uh, obstacles coming out of Northwood going east that we're going to get cut out first. And then as we head east, as we head further east, there's uh, some patching that needs to be done. Did the, basically trying to hit the ones that are heaved up first, and two biggest ones right outside of town are the worst. And then we'll start heading our way out the other way, so.
Are you looking at doing that on some of the other nice concrete roads we've had, we've got blowouts, Rich? Are you going to get in and toughen them and re-concrete them?
We'll try to get those, I think what I want to do too, and I don't know that we'll get them this year, and with as many that are out there, we may look at trying to maybe get a subcontract together, just because our crews are always so busy doing other things, we seem to never get to the, the critical, well, not critical, but the patching. We've got them Dura patched so that they're sealed up a little bit, but you know, we're trying to chase our tails and that kind of patching takes a little bit longer. Um, something we can look at too is if we do do a uh, if we do do a TIF, a TIF or a borrow or whatever, we can put a big project together for patching, which would really, really help that out on top of. I think what I'm seeing is my uh, expansion joint project that I put together in Mitchell County, where we saw it expansion joints, and I think that's really kind of helping us out too, so we could probably add something together with that. But uh, for the time being, I want to get some of these bigger, these bigger uh, concrete heaves that we got on 105 touched up first, and then we can, we always talk about trying to get out there to do it, and it's just now that we've got things organized, it might be a little bit easier to hit some of that stuff too. So, um, I don't know many questions on that yet, but uh, our job apps are due on Friday for two positions we'll have open, so we'll start interviewing after we get apps brought in, and then um, that's all I've got.
Have you been getting a bunch of applications, or?
Not as many as I thought I would. Um, I thought with everything going on, I'd get a lot more than I have been, but usually the last week is when we see the rush. So, hopefully we'll get a bunch this week.
Better.
What I've got on secondary roads, if you guys have any other questions, otherwise I've got a couple uh, drainage things that I can discuss with you too.
Jackie's got a question.
I was just going to say back to the highway 105 trust fund, there's 1.7 in there.
Okay. And I don't know, you know, that trust fund has always been kind of a golden egg for the county as far as being able to keep that money there and, and borrow it for other things, and it's always getting repaid back. But I guess I don't know.
It's been a while.
Do we spend it, get it out of the system and then worry about it? It's always been kind of a nice little.
Cushion, yeah.
But. Yeah, and so, do we just eliminate it and use it like it's supposed to be used, or whatever? I guess that's kind of your guys' call, but the intent was to, the intent was for that money to go to maintenance on 105 once we got it given to us by the state, and you know, we kind of never really used it, so.
It'll just be part of the puzzle when we figure out how much TIF money there is going to be and what, what we're going to need to borrow to do whatever projects get determined.
Well, it's probably just another fund that doesn't need to be sitting there either, I guess, I don't know.
We need something.
One of the only ones that's got a positive balance.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else for Rich on roads as far as that goes?
I got one thing, Rich, um, 430th Street and Dove Avenue, for about the first half mile going north there, there's getting to be an area near, there's getting quite a few large trees in there, it's actually pretty solid. Solid in there, it's going to cause snow removal problems this winter, I think, hopefully they can get in there and brush hog them and spray them.
All right, I'll get the guys on that to look at that.
Okay.
Um, on a, on a drainage side, if you guys are going to head that direction.
Sure.
Um, and I talked to, to uh, Jackie about this a little bit. Larry Small keeps calling me and wanting to know what the decision is on that little bridge he's got. And I'm just to the point now, I'm going to just forward him and, you know, a, a phone number to consultants and say, have him come look at your bridge, because I really don't know what the answer is. If it's a private bridge, then it's not a district issue, and I know he's worried about the wash, the scour around the bridge, or I don't know if the back wall, he wants somebody to go out and look at it with him. And I guess instead of wasting everybody's time, maybe he just calls a consultant to do it. But I think what he wanted was somebody from the districts or wha- whatever to go look and say, hey, here's what we got. Because I think one of the questions is, is that it's um, you know, it's scour around the back wall, or the back wall might be missing for all I know, just by the descriptions he's talking about. And he wants to know who's responsible for filling that silt back here, that washout back in, and I'm, well, if the bridge wasn't there, it wouldn't be washed out, the bridge is there, it's a private issue, or it's a landowner issue, not a district issue, so. The, the question is, is what, you know, what do we want to do? And, and I'm just to the point now, I think we just get ahold of a consultant and they'll tell you what you can do. Because I know they want to repair it, but I don't know, you know, what it looks like or anything like that, what the cost would be to repair it, so.
Drainage attorney would probably be another good number for him too.
Yeah. Eric, come in.
But I guess, and, and maybe Jackie, you can send me that. You guys had a resolution or something about uh, crossings over drainage districts here a little while back? And who's responsible for those? Was that, was there like a statement you guys put out to the districts at one time, or am I wrong with that?
Okay, remember Ken Hughes?
No, I mean, it's basically been a policy.
No, there was just a, a crossing that had gotten TLC in the past, and it wasn't going to get any more in the future. That was, that, it was just one individual.
Is that the way the, the districts are going to handle those from now on then, is it's just they're kind of?
Maybe because, because Paulson put a great big one on his own property before, down by Joyce. He put that bill on there.
It's just the way the law reads.
Okay, well, you know, that's just, I want to get it, I, I want to get it back to him and just tell him, hey, look, this is, this is your responsibility, it's not anybody else's to have somebody come out and look at it. And I know it costs money to have it done, but I guess I want to know what you guys want to do with it.
So it's his baby.
It's his baby, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Recommend a consultant of some sort, and if he asks questions on the way the law reads, um, we can show them about uh, drainage or attorney as well.
I'll get him some numbers then.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and then I think you guys have a, a couple of other drainage things here. I'm not sure about the Ken Parcher, but the Sam Vanacek one, that one uh, I looked at last week. I don't know where the scour hole came from, but there's a big, I'd probably take about a load or two of dirt. I don't, I didn't see a tile or anything in that location, but um, somehow it's scoured out on the bank and needs to just get some material put back in it.
The reason why it did, or?
I couldn't see it because the way the, the way the, the banks are, it's kind of built up um, to a slope that pushes the water back toward the road, and I couldn't see a ti- any, any outlet or anything below it. It just all of a sudden sloughed off. Um, I can send you guys some pictures too later on, but it didn't, it wasn't, it isn't very big, but because the banks are so deep and, and, and uh, long that it might take at least a load of dirt to put back in there, or. I mean, whatever it's going to take, it's going to take a long stick to do any sort of reclamation if there is any. It just, it was weird, it's like there's a, it sloughed off and then there's a deep trench down through there, and I just don't think there's a pipe there, I don't know, I couldn't see anything.
Yeah. Well, that uh, we just had a gentleman down in that area, well, it'd be the grafton area, maybe um, talking about getting some ditch cleaned with a long reach, so um, he's going to contact Elliot Evans about that. So maybe if it's something that does work out and he comes over and does that, maybe he could go up and take care of Sam then, while he's in the area with the machine.
Sure.
So I guess we can see what comes with that if, if he does come over this way, so.
Okay, well, that's the ones I know about, um.
I can show you the Parcher one, could I screen share? What do I have to do?
That's sure screen.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Big green button.
Yeah, well, I was on the other screen, I don't have both my monitors.
Oh.
And then, I don't know, okay, basically, there's 105, there's um, 65 over here, there's um, Ken's place. Um, that river comes through there and.
I think you're sharing it.
I'm not sharing.
Let's go.
I clicked the button.
Yeah, but which one are you sharing?
I have no idea. Oh, I gotta pick it.
Yep.
And then sure.
There you go.
Good?
Okay, there's 65, there's Ken's place, there's a river. Basically, this tile doesn't go all the way to the river, so he's asking to get, it's about, no, I think it was like, it's supposed to buy a thousand dollars. Chad here has given a bid for 4717 to get.
Wow, yeah.
Yeah.
So just an open ditch?
Looks like just 40 feet to get in there.
Forty feet and just five.
It could have been washed out over the years too.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, more likely.
So that's, that's all I know about that one, let's work that.
Well, we're done then.
Yeah.
Just we'll get her done.
Yeah, because he's, needs to get the water away.
Mm-hmm, or rolls back any farther.
Yeah.
I don't know, they over here, if it dumps into that, water could have changed that.
Yeah.
You know, yeah, well, the river could have built up and.
Well, it could have changed channels too.
Yeah.
Well, it looks like there's something going on here.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
A lot of stuff.
It looks like the river was channeled more to the east, the part of it, there's more trees and brush going on that.
Yeah.
Man, get it out of, don't need it fixed, done the legwork.
All right, okay, thank you.
Rich, did you ever look at that from Mike Gaskell up there, a couple of weeks ago?
Yeah, Finch Avenue, from Mike Gaskell.
Um, I don't think I got up that far yet.
Okay.
Which one, what was his?
Talk to you, Ken.
It's, it's on Finch Avenue, and it's about a half, quarter of a mile north of the road that goes to Happy Times.
Oh, his driveway.
It's his driveway.
Up to the bench.
Hey, okay.
Up to, up to that bench site, I sent you the pictures, it was washed.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I'll see if the guys went up there and looked at it, I remember it now.
Okay.
Okay. We'll take, I'll, I'll see if Russ or Al had taken a peek at it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, so we're good with the bench check and the Parcher, if she looks like, do we have any drainage planes?
Oh, yes. There's one checked and the rest of it's stamped ones.
Make a motion for the drainage planes.
Second.
Motion second to approve drainage planes, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, I?
I.
I, both. Motion, carry. Just the one spot?
Yeah.
Send that down.
Just one spot.
Yeah, one spot.
Two different, on the check and on the stamped ones.
Oh, the 71 spot? See, I got one. Nice page right here is one.
All right, those, I gotta figure them out, so I don't want you to. Yeah, somebody switched that on me and I haven't switched it back. Now we check those.
Hold that tight.
Hold that tight, okay.
It's tough, but I guarantee.
Stay calm together.
All right.
I leave one off you, Ken.
Just keep them out of the book.
Yeah. What's more?
I just like making it complicated.
On Monday morning?
No. Sorry, it's been complicating enough.
Then our right of way annexation stuff will take place at 10:30.
Yep.
Where's the other one?
Get claims to.
So where is that, just the one or just?
No, there's maybe a page or two ahead. Yeah.
Okay, regular planes, we take a look at them?
Yep.
Any questions?
I'm hoping we approve the plans.
Motion second to approve the planes, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, I?
I.
I, both?
That was easy.
Yeah.
There's lots of them.
Uh, one more to that call, is one of them online?
I do not see her.
Nothing today?
Do you have a meeting tomorrow?
Yeah, we have a meeting tomorrow.
And then uh, the IT director from Winnebago County and I met with her last week and talked about some technology stuff that we're going to be addressing with you guys in the meeting tomorrow.
Right, Jason Petersburg.
Ornan.
Ornan.
Not a lot new to report this week, they got rained out twice last week trying to get the rock subbase installed. Uh, the first one, I think that was the only place in the county that rained, was right on the job site there, but. They have a machine sitting there, and they've got about 400 feet left to get the rock down, get it fine graded, and we'll get in there and get paving jobs in and get the road paved.
Yeah.
No issues, I'm aware of.
Question? Perfect, I don't think so.
Just question, are we going to do anything for weed control out there until they actually seed it then? I see it's starting to grow.
Well, I'm, I'm expecting that they'll touch some of it up again grading wise.
Yeah.
Might knock some of it down, but after that, we could put some temp grass in there if we wanted to. Then we'd rip it up come September and do permanent seeding.
Okay, I'm just curious, like, you know, you know how it goes when you get bear soil, it explodes, but.
Yeah.
About that another day.
I think we did have an item in the contract for temp grass, we could.
Okay.
Stabilize things.
Okay, like a cover crop or something, you know, or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so I'm good, any other questions for Jason?
Nope.
Okay, thanks Jason. Uh, your reports?
Well, yeah. I have my quarterly, Sheriff Smalley, Sheriff Quarter- Quarterly, Clerk of Court, and reporters.
Motion to approve the.
Second. Motion second to approve reports, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, I?
I.
I, both? Carry. Any opinions? Okay, any parallel ability?
Yeah.
Any other changes, up your license?
Yep.
License, Joe Stop and Lanterns and Lace, I'm in Miami.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, I?
I.
I, both? Carry. Department headed discussion, any department heads? Any issues, problems, questions, concerns?
Um, I got one. Um, I'd like to bring it up, I'd like to add another part-time person for jail dispatch. Um, I do have the money in my budget, and reasoning why is I have one on light duty right now. I have another one that is out on medical. I've got one that's going to be coming up on 12 weeks, probably leaving maternity, and I'm going to be talking to Renee about my current part-timer this week about um, maybe uh, what we're going to be doing with him. So, I'd like to at least get an ad out to start looking for one more part-time person, if that's fine. It's in my budget, I should have no problem moving it around, so.
Okay, yep, your department, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other department heads out there, issues?
I know there is concern about us not having policies for COVID. You know, like if somebody happened to be sick and we needed to shut down and any of that kind of stuff, we have game plan for any of that. Um, I don't know whose responsibility it is, but I know the concern's out there, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Well, I mean, as far as what I've seen that's going on out there, yeah, if we do get it in an office, we've got to try to contain it to that office, I guess, but everybody's going to have to get tested, especially the person directly connected, and um, quarantine till the test results come back. The others, I was going to have to get tested as well, but how do you?
But we don't have any protocol.
Right. Right.
Right. Didn't Franklin County just have to shut down here?
That's what I heard.
Yeah.
And, you know, we got different buildings, so you might not have to shut everything down.
Yeah.
I just, it's like, if, if it happened, I mean, they're contained, everybody.
Which should be, but you do go back.
Yeah, we do.
So, I mean, yeah.
As long as we have money, can we?
Well, I know, but I mean, it's just one of those non-profan ideas that happen there.
But other counties have stuff in place and we don't.
So is there something that follows, so you can get hold of the follow or should I rewrite in the book? Steel? You want me to ask around? Okay.
Yeah. The way, I mean.
I mean, are people reaching out to their EMA directors or what are they doing? Because I, I don't know what.
I mean, public health too.
Yeah, and public health.
Yeah. I think they're very useful about policy in place, but I don't wanna rewrite the book and then do something that.
They're out there.
Yeah.
But I got enough stuff going on. I, I don't have time to go fishing for policy.
I'll, I'll go ahead and reach out to the ISAP folks and grab some. Sure. I'll go and do that.
Thank you, Joe.
I say with all the the groups throughout the state, working, counties working together, should learn something fairly fitting, I guess.
That's all. I don't think we've had a regional policy come through for a while, so. We'll keep steel.
You're a policy writer.
Yeah, that's a good idea, though. We do need something.
I got called about last weekend. I don't have time.
Let's say it's just, yeah.
And it's a county-wide thing. It's not just that out.
Yeah, well, I was saying, if you get in one of the county-owned shops, I mean, fortunate enough, if they weren't working together, you know, you can kinda quarantine that shop off, but if it gets in the courthouse, that's the tricky part of quarantine enough.
Well, and we're concerned about, um, court starting to parade through and none, none of them, I mean, nobody knows how to get where they're supposed to get it. And I, I'm just gonna shut my doors.
Oh, poor you.
I, I got, I got a sign on them that court, courts that way, bathrooms are that way. I, I, treasurer's office is down the street. I mean, that, we get those questions every day when there's people in the courtroom.
Save yourselves.
And it's frustrating. And I do have, um, since we have elections coming up, I have seen these guards come, I was locked in, but I have seen these guards coming too, so. What's another three nights to the box, right? I, I just, I don't wanna be the person that ends up with somebody sick.
Absolutely.
It just, I, I don't know.
Right.
So, so protocol process, I'll put through the next thirty or sixty days and slow that down.
Fire that target burn.
Well, it's not gonna be over, but we'll solve that down.
We're at twenty-five now.
That was at the last weekend. Does magistrate court open back up too?
I thought today.
I'm thinking today, yeah, okay, so that's.
That's why we didn't go in there and they're, they measured out and marked out and all that good stuff. Occupancy is gonna be ten people.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, but the hallway is gonna fill up anyway, I mean.
And how do you stop that?
Well, unless you, unless they bring in a region power, be the sheriff or whatever, and I would have to, and force it, I mean.
Yeah.
Whole time babysitting job.
And who's paying for it? And who's cleaning and, I mean, there's so many questions.
That was a question.
I have, I've never gotten an answer on that, because I asked when, when the courts, you know, got an email from Adam and I asked and I, I haven't gotten an answer on that one, but, you know, for.
Marshal, and one of those counties, the guy was questioning that too, his own meeting, I was sitting there and he wanted to know what we've been here and I have heard nothing yet. He, somebody else woke up and said they thought they were told that it would be the courts that would be taking care of any extra cleaning, something like that. They weren't gonna require us to do it, so.
Because I heard that there'd be something about, you know, basically, as soon as they're done, the products need to be there and they just wipe off and go on their way.
Go on their way.
So, I, I.
I don't know either.
So, we need to just have the products available or if they take care of that? I, I don't know, there's a whole bunch of them.
When I, when I went in and measured stuff last week with the two judges, they have their own stuff in there and they're gonna be asking each attorney to clean up their spots. My bailiff will be doing the security slash how many people are in there, so I think that's kind of already been discussed.
Okay, what, what about the hallway then?
The hallway probably falls under us, um, just in the courtrooms is what I was, way I was understanding. I know the one thing that was talked about with the magistrate court was talking to having them, I did suggest your app on setting up appointments, um, but the other thing was having the bailiff have them go back out waiting in their cars until their time comes up to be used.
They remove the chairs. Take them out or.
Yeah, that's what it takes. I mean, that's what they're doing at salons and other places, you sit your car and wait your turn.
I'll call you on your phone.
Yeah.
Same way, the medical same.
Yeah. So if it gets, if it gets to a courthouse like that, we'll have, yeah, have to clear the hallway out and just throw away their vehicles and. Time is gone, time is gone, that's, that's the joys of it. It's, it's slow everything down, it'll be more of a pain, but, but it'll still get done.
So the chairs in the hallway need to be pulled too or spaced or whatever, and their fabric, they can't be wiped down. Just like our jury boss, that's all fabric too. Dan, do you guys have any ideas about, um, I, I was trying to find an ad, but I couldn't find anything so far, but trying to find, Joe and Tina always had somebody that would come if they weren't available. Brian's tried and he hasn't gotten very far, but when he's on vacation, we need somebody and, um, I don't know if we put some kind of an ad out, but it's, it's not, it's not even part-time, it's just.
The will call.
Yeah, it's on call or whatever and I, I don't know if anybody wants that or, I, I don't know.
It's a good question.
Yeah, yeah, it's all, all kinds of fun. Yeah, it's a job, but not a job.
Joe, Joe and Tina still around?
They don't want.
They don't want. Just gonna come back for two weeks here. I don't know.
Well, especially with COVID, would you? I think, I think Joe's happy just, just coming in every once in a while to see him.
Chip chip. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know.
So if anybody, yeah, if anybody has any ideas.
Yeah, I know what's there.
Or know anybody that, I mean, if there's a service or, I, I don't know.
Well, good.
That's not a new.
That could cost a lot more. I, I have no idea.
You could hire a cleaning service to do it during those times and just tell them, you know, specify what we need done. Ryan would have to organize what's getting done this week, bond on.
Yeah, so that might be the simplest things that way, you don't have to worry about any. My crews or any of that kind of stuff.
Well, and we just did it. It was just technically accounts payable anyway, we just paid like a contract.
But sometimes you're better off just hiring a service that does it on a regular basis. I mean, you know, if you're willing to shift somebody up here for half a day.
Well, if you know that Brian's on vacation, it can be scheduled, months or two.
I would think so, I would hope you.
Man, is there anybody local that does that?
I'm sure there's, I mean, there, there's been some, man or woman that do it, I don't know right now. You guys, I'm tired for my mom and stuff, I'll phone. But now.
Yeah, I guess we, if anybody knows anybody, but it's only as close as we can, just to be the cheapest route. Well, in the base of what Adam Mason said, we're afraid to drive up here, but they do that every day.
That's probably his fact, you know, because they're, I mean, they probably hopefully will open to somebody that'll come and.
Yeah, there might be.
I'm sure they come up here.
Yeah. Yeah. Maybe have Brian do that, it feels good.
Yeah, if anybody knows a cleaning lady or man or.
Right.
You know, that's one.
You contact the cleaning services of some sort and see what they could do, because like I say, he will know what needs to be done during his time gone.
He'd have to show them the ropes and.
Yeah, I would say.
And they'd just be able to call when he needs them.
Okay. I love city offices.
Yeah.
Talk to them.
We have this Susan that does a WCA office.
Talk to her.
She works at Virals.
Yeah, too?
Yeah, she does WCA office.
Check with her. Yeah, I think she'd be interesting. She's on your walk back.
My girl.
Oh, your girl.
You're so funny.
Yeah, let's see, let's see if Brian can, you know, they, you know, they way down.
He hasn't had any of them.
I like.
He, he had somebody for a little while and they, or he's had a couple of bounds and, and stuff. Because it's just really sporadic.
Two or three, I mean, two or three weeks a year total?
If even that.
Right.
Yeah, unless we, unless he wanted to manage his time more with, you know, if he's moving snow more or outside more, then somebody could just pick up that stuff. Because it'd be nice if he could line up people to clean up the landscaping and all that kind of stuff too.
Well, yeah, sometimes there, you're better off hiring a volunteer service, but you do that. Some landscape.
Yeah, make sure their gutters are all clean and he does all.
Oh, talking about gutters. I was, I was giving somebody a tour and went up to the, um, to the court floor and, um, opened the, um, fire escape door.
Yeah.
There's an eve that's dripping water right in the brick and there's a hole.
Going right into the mouth?
Yeah, so I, I don't know why I keep finding that stuff, but.
It's your job.
So I, I don't know, did I send someone look at it or who, or gutter, I don't know, gutter person or, I, I don't know.
If gutter person's a better, more quick contract, fixing gutters.
Right. But to get up there, what's it?
I'm taking a man on the left.
Unless there's enough platform there that, I mean, it wouldn't be safe.
No, it wouldn't be.
Yeah, I, I don't know. Come look at it.
I believe it.
It's cool.
Yeah, hello, has Brian, Brian's got a lift right here.
Yeah. Well, he's been there already.
Well, it's like.
He took care of the face of the one blowing outside.
Yeah, he took care of that, that's right.
Months ago, and he's got a lift right, well.
On that windy area.
I'd say if he's, he would want to do it, have him support and.
Yeah.
Feel it, whatever you gotta do.
Oh, yeah, you just need that, it's that stuff that, that's supposed to seal on bolts or whatever. Make everything.
Just cover the whole court out, so.
Yeah, no kidding. Yeah, then we die from the mold.
Yeah. I'll go sometime.
Yeah, pretty cool.
I mean, see if you, got time sometime this week to go, take a peek at it.
Be good.
Supposed to be decent out in the morning, supposed to be decent the rest of the week, getting so. Supervisor, weekly reports.
I have nothing.
I had.
Probably anywhere.
Well, you're lucky, yeah. I had hazmat transportation, um, middle of the week hazmat has basically gone over budget, transportation. Hazmat budget was good, they actually had a little bit of surplus, so good shape that way, um, transportation. Just some of the budget stuff too, and then, uh, COVID stuff, of course, and then, um, also talking about the bridges, uh, I think Thurlax should have opened up here either the end of last week or this week, which is, that's down. Are they gonna do one of them by Flint, Floyd sounds? There's three bridges on Highway nine if they're doing some work on it. Flint is another one, I understood, right, right there at the corner.
Oh, really?
Well.
Serratt Ridge?
Yeah, I think so, I did, so. Maybe Rich has been top on there.
They got a couple, um, I can't remember where they were all at and how they did their permits, I think, I think.
They're by four six, but the other two are in Worth County or so.
Yeah, the guy sees some, uh, I see some sign bases on the county roads again for detours, so I just can't remember where I've seen them.
Okay, I had Iowa Workforce talking aboard, we, I think we kind of finalized talking to gentleman's agreement anyway on E twenty-eight, we'll be sending that off to the Iowa Workforce attorneys. Look, yeah, and then it'll come back to us to have Jeff look over and we'll have to approve it, so get closer and get that finalized. Moving on to the next step, so. That was all I had.
Okay, good deal. I didn't have any last week either, so. Quite one for me. Anything else for agenda items for the future?
I'm just trying to finish.
Anything like free?
Yeah, they're all scheduled. Oh, um, I did, so I did, I got volunteered to be on the governor's connectivity work group for economic recovery. Um, so that is on first meetings today, this afternoon, but I do have one that's gonna be during Monday morning.
Okay.
So I'll just have to have one of you guys take over the aisle and stuff, so.
The chair.
Uh, chair, okay.
Where's your man? I've never, shove it on there.
Just remember you're coming around that.
If you want, slept, and I don't forget.
It's, it's four meetings, we're gonna get over.
Okay.
Sir, are you coming up at all? You guys know?
I have WHW.
For long, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe we should again, talk to those guys, we're, we're in our new agreement and.
Yeah.
Get together. We can chat with them tomorrow, like. Our, little back meeting. All right, I guess we will recess.
I'll just.
We'll call it.
Yeah, I'll just.
It's a different Zoom meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we can adjourn this one, right?
So, and I'll end this meeting, I'll adjourn this and we'll, we'll pop up with the next one, so.
So we're about to recess already?